You've got to see this tragedy. A Pensacola City Councilman invites a Satanist to invoke Satan over the city as Christians pray and look on. At the same time, a truck is running over people in Nice. It's a tragedy in both places at the same time. Check it out. Who would have ever thought that day would come? That one nation under God, indivisible with liberty for all, that we would actually bring Satanists to speak over our city? Well, that happened in the city of Pensacola just recently. And we were there to cover it with our journalists to be able to know what's taking place, what happened. And it began one week prior to the Satanists coming up. Nothing happens unless someone gives them the ability to do it. And it looks like our president, according to some, we'll find out, of the city council, the Pensacola City Council in Florida, had set this up on the agenda, according to the city clerk that we'll talk to her in just a moment as well. But let's first take a look. This is one week prior to it. This is us Councilman Wingate, and he's given the invocation. And that's what's at question here. Will there be an invocation where prayer goes out? Will we invoke God to be able to bless our cities, our communities, to speak and give wisdom to our government? Because we cannot do this thing without God. And that's what the invocation is about. So Councilman Wingate, he realized this was coming up. And so the day that they're deciding whether there's going to be a moment of silence or we're going to continue prayer, they were voting that night, and he's the one that gave the invocation. But notice who's behind him. Now, there's a rule of order, rubbish rules of order going on. He's giving the invocation, he's speaking, he's the councilman. Behind him, with his back turned towards him, is the Satanist, a disciple of Satan, who was wanting to be able to take that mic and use it in the future to be able to speak over the city. Let's take a look now.
We'll begin this meeting with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be given by Councilman Gerald Wingate, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I ask that you bow your head in prayer. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity for living in America where we enjoy freedoms and prosperity. We ask that you bless this group that's gathered here tonight and help us to make good decisions that benefit the citizens of the city of Pensacola. We all remember that Jesus was tempted by the devil. There were three temptations. Again, the devil taken them up into an exceeding high mountain and showed him all the kingdoms of the world and the glory of them, and said unto him, "All these things will I give thee if thou wilt fall down and worship me." Then said Jesus unto him, "If thou wilt fall down and worship me." Then said Jesus unto him, "Get thee hence, Satan; for it is written, Thou shalt worship the Lord thy God, and him only shall thou serve." In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
As he was given this invocation, this Satanist came up behind him, turned his back to the particular councilman that was given the invocation, and began to do these chants and these different things. It's important to understand that because here, a Christian was, a councilman, sitting here giving the invocation, and everybody's sitting calmly in their seats, but the Satanist, the one that was following a disciple of Satan, he actually stood up, raised his hands up, you can see an image of it probably right now, and he was back to back with the man giving the invocation. So remember this, he stood up and began to do these satanic chants or whatever he wanted to be able to do during the invocation that was taking place right there. Well, also spoke there, a particular lady that spoke, her name was Marty Tackett. Let's listen to what Marty Tackett had to say.
My name's Marty Tackett. I live at 111 Euclid Street with my husband Dennis. And I just wanted to quickly remind you all and all of us here that there's not ever, for the most part that I've ever recalled, a public congregation, a sports event, or even a baseball game that even started without per se in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag. And if you go down through it, it says "One Nation Under God." Now, we have a son that's proudly served in the Navy now, going on 16 years, and we're very proud of him. But he told me early in his training that if he got into war, and he's been deployed a couple of times, that he was to take within his heart something that would withstand him through that time of trial. And when our grandson was just three years old, I taught him the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag, and he recited it to mark our son. And he said that was something that he was going to take into battle. Now, if we don't stand together and believe that we are truly one nation under God, then what else do we stand for? Then we need to apologize to every man and woman that serves in our United States forces that defends our right to freedom. Thank you.
So you're looking at where Christians were coming out, and she's just sharing her heart, like you're supposed to do in regards to the city council. And they're voting that night, whether they're going to just bring a Satanist in the following week to be able to speak over the city, or they're going to just shut out prayer altogether. And the council were voting that night. So you see them talking about... Another particular Christian that was there, her name is Felicia. She came in, Costa, goes by, I think Josie is her nickname, and she's sharing in her heart about what she thought as a citizen of the city, calmly just sharing that this is a Christian city, Christian government, you know, I came here, it's one nation under God, and she's sharing her thoughts. And notice how calmly it's happening, but at the same time, there's a Satanist standing up in the crowd doing these chant type things. Let's take a look.
Hello, my name is Felicity Takasi. My name is Felicity Takasi. My nickname is Josie. Many people know me by Josie. My pastor is Pastor Ted Trailer. The reason I'm here today is I wanted to express my opinion. I've been in America for 44 years. I did come the legal way in this country, first of all. And I'm a U.S. citizen, and I love America. And I learned how to pray in school in Washington, D.C. when I went to school. My classes, first thing in the morning, it was the pledge and prayer. And that's how I grew up in America. That's the America that I know. And all of a sudden, they're coming from everywhere to change our love for Jesus Christ in America. The United States is a Christian nation, not a Muslim nation, okay? And for the atheists, we love you guys. I hope you can turn like us, loving God. And I wonder what kind of money they use, because the money that I use is says "In God We Trust." I got it right here. So it's here, established. So that's the money that they're using. So I ask myself, I wonder what kind of money they're using if they don't trust in God. So I have talked to many atheists before, but there's a lot going on, emptiness and just so much. But don't let one person change the love. There's so many of us that love Jesus Christ. And this is America. America's falling apart, and it's very sad. It makes me sad to see America where it's going right now with everything. So we're going to make America great again.
This is so important. You're seeing Christians calmly come up and say, "This is our roots. This is where we come from. We're a Christian nation. On our money, it says, 'In God We Trust.'" You know, why would we want to be able to bring a Satanist in to be able to speak over our city? And they're presenting it, even though you hear in the background, the Satanists are making noises. Actually, some of them are quoting scripture, which is pretty interesting. One particular atheist stood up to talk in all that we have at today, but she says, "For God's sake," or something like that. She calls on God. And it's like, you know, it's just total confusion. But listen, God's watching. Your city council, your county commissioner, they're watching you in Congress and Senate. God's watching you. And are you going to turn your back on God? Well, we're going to have Dennis Sackett, a deacon for First Baptist Church in Pensacola, is going to be speaking next. And we're going to show you how this whole thing builds that you probably didn't see, how it leads up to the president of the city council allowing and approving and scheduling according to the city clerk, our Satanists to be able to come in and speak over the city of Pensacola. Join us after the break. So we're at the city of Pensacola, the city council meeting. They called this meeting, and they're calling it on the 7th of July, I believe it is, right after Independence Day, to be able to decide whether, with all these different maneuvers going on, are they going to allow a Satanist to come and speak over the city of Pensacola. And so, you know, Christians and members of the Pensacola community are getting up and speaking, but atheists spoke, and Satanists spoke. And one atheist, when she got up to speak about supporting a Satanist to come in and speak, I mean, here she is an atheist, she don't believe in God, but she just says, she invokes the name of God, "For the love of God, let the Satanist..." It was crazy. As a matter of fact, take a look at this. Her name is Tiff Clark.
But is your faith so weak that you can't withstand an invocation by another person of another belief system? You can withstand it, please. And you might learn something, for the love of God, if I may invoke him right now. Please, just come together.
It's so important that even the atheist is saying, "For the love of God," and it just is amazing. Her own mother says that she's an atheist, you know, I don't know her faith or not faith, but her mother spoke the next week and said...
Taught her something.
Taught her something. At least she invoked the name of God. But this is Dennis Sackett. He's speaking as well. This is important because we're going to show you where this is all going to go to because media reported in such a way that Christians were all, "Wow, these are Christians just talking." They're saying, "Listen, this is not good for the country. This is not a way to honor God." As a matter of fact, listen, this is Dennis Sackett, deacon at First Baptist Church there in Pensacola.
Mr. President, members of the council, madam clerk and staff, my name's Dennis Sackett, and my wife and I live at 111 Euclid Street here in Pensacola. I am a deacon at First Baptist Church and have the privilege and pleasure of teaching a Sunday School class of 80 and 90-year-olds. We read in the Bible that in 2 Chronicles, Chapter 7, Verse 14, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I'll forgive their sin and heal their land." And I emphasize "heal their land." It strikes me that our nation and our state, and certainly our city, need healing in so many different ways. While our nation and our city have experienced an upturn in the economy, there are still many, many people right here in Pensacola who live below the poverty level. Our homeless population continues to grow. They sleep on sidewalks, they sleep in the parks, they sleep in the woods. We have a deep compassion for them, and clearly the poor and the oppressed need healing. I believe that our nation, our state, and our city, we obviously live under the constant threat of terror attacks like the one in Orlando, and we read each day of more and more senseless gun violence. We need healing. Every one of us need a continual spiritual healing. My wife and I certainly do. We are veterans in our city that suffer each day from mental and physical scars from their service to our country. This one nation under God, they've defended it so honorably, they need healing. Certainly, our state and federal government, our governments here in Pensacola and across the nation often find themselves in strife, the legislative and administrative divisions battling one another. We need to be healed. While Pensacola has seen the advent of all kinds of new business opportunities, there are still small businesses struggling. We need a financial healing. You folks have to make tough decisions. I watch the council meetings and attend as often as I can. You need wisdom, discernment, and guidance that can only come through the one true God. We have to rely on Him each day at our house. We've hired and entrusted you with decisions that will impact citizens individually in our city for years to come. Unless you're much, much brighter than most of the citizens of our city, you need wisdom and guidance and discernment that can only come from the one true God. In Pensacola, there are hundreds of Christian churches, and those churches are filled with thousands of people. Well over half of our population identifies with the Christian faith. That's the majority. And I think you see tonight that the silent majority isn't going to be silent anymore. My prayer tonight is that you will not decide to stop invocations at our meetings, that instead you'll seek God's guidance and wisdom and discernment in all the decisions you make so that our city will continue to be blessed.
So you're looking at citizens coming and speaking. You're looking at citizens coming and speaking about, you know, we just don't need to do this, we need God to heal our land. He says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and turn from their wicked ways, then I'll heal their land." So heal their land. He's saying, "We need healing in all these different areas." And I think about, you know, people say, "Well, you know, one nation under God that came in under the 50s when they added to the Pledge of Allegiance." But listen what Billy Webb said about that. This is important because you're about to see the Pensacola City Council allow a Satanist to be able to speak over the city. For some strange reasons, they didn't want us to say, "Listen, there's 800 churches, there's plenty of room to do this." Reportedly, according to some, this particular man has spoken before over the situation. But listen to Billy Webb.
Members of the council, I'm Billy Webb. I'm a retired Marine Corps officer. I fell in love with the Pensacola area when I was stationed here, ended up marrying a local girl and coming back from Oklahoma to make this my home. In my travels in the Marine Corps, I got to go to about 20 countries. And of all those countries I went to, I didn't find many of them that I'd like to live in rather than the United States. We are the greatest nation in the world. I got to visit the cemeteries at Normandy and Al Sants Lorraine and Philippines, and the Punch Bowl in Hawaii, the National Cemetery in Arlington. And if you walk amongst all those graves, you'll see crosses and Stars of David. With all respect to my atheist friends, I didn't see any of those markers that said atheist. And there's only been two people that are willing to die for you. First one is Jesus Christ. He wanted to die to save your soul. And the other one is the American veteran, and he wanted to die to keep you free. And that's whether you're an atheist, or a Christian, or a Muslim, or whatever, it doesn't matter. Everybody's familiar with the Star Spangled Banner, and I want to end real quick on this. There actually are four verses to the Star Spangled Banner. We only hear the first one. I have ancestors that fought at Fort McHenry. Colonel Armistead is one of my ancestors. He commanded that fort. His brother was killed in the battle while the British were shelling it from offshore. When Francis Scott Key wrote that National Anthem, he wrote four verses, and the fourth verse is one we ever, never hear. And I want to just quote it right now. "Oh, thus be it ever, when free men shall stand between their loved home and war's dissolution. Blessed with victory and peace may the heaven-rescued land, praised with the power that hath made and preserved our nation. Then conquer we must, when our cause is just, and this be our motto in God is our trust. And the Star Spangled Banner and triumph shall weigh over the land of the free and the home of the brave. In God We Trust has been in there since before 1956, trust me. Thank you very much."
So you're seeing firsthand Christians present their case, and as we saw in the beginning of the invocation, where the Satanist stood up, and they were the ones standing up while the Christians are carefully sharing the history of our nation. As a matter of fact, listen to Marcos real quick, but listen to what Marcos says about not going this way. Take a look.
I just have one brief statement. If we don't remain one nation under God, we will be one nation gone. Gone like 9/11, the attacks, God, you know, let the veil be lifted. We will be one nation gone if we leave God out of the equation. He is the reason we're all here. He is the reason America was established. He established it. I believe in freedom of speech, you know, freedom of religious practice. I believe in that. But the God of the Bible, you can't do anything without Him. You can't do any better without Him. He answers prayers. He is the love. These Satanists, these atheists back here, they don't believe in that. They want chaos. They want confusion. And we just ask you to remember, again, if we don't remain one nation under God, we will be one nation gone. Thank you.
If we don't remain one nation under God, we're going to be one nation gone. If we don't remain one nation under God, we're going to be one nation gone. I mean, listen what's being said. And the city council had an opportunity. We're about, we're going to go to a break, but when we come back from the break, you're going to see firsthand, I mean, they went ahead and voted and allowed it to take place. And we're going to take you there, what happened seven days later in the very same city council hall. And watch the response where the president of the city hall, his name is Barr, of the city hall, president of the city council, Barr, he didn't ask the police to come over and lead the Satanists out. When he stood up and his back was against the councilman who was leading the invocation, but watch what he does when the Christians stand up. It's amazing what happens in the different response. Welcome back. We are talking today about a council meeting in the city of Pensacola, Florida, where the city council opened their arms and voted to receive a Satanist to come in and invoke Satan over the city. The invocation is when you actually pray and invoke God, asking Him to look over the politicians and the governmental leaders and ask them to come into our city. And as you, so we're going there to this point today, right now, where this is taking place. And I think it was Dykman, Dykman Gaines, who had something to say as we were interviewing him there at the city council before we have this Satanist come up and what he did, because we want to talk specifically about what happened. Let's go to Dykman.
Here to stop this satanic agenda that's trying to come into our city. And we're all here with other leaders in the city to try to put a stop to this because this does not need to go on.
So what do you think of a Satanist praying over our city?
To put it blunt, I think it's just stupid and demonic. If you look at the intentions of the satanic agenda, it's all about control and witchcraft. And everything that it stems from, it has no positivity in it. It has no good production or nothing like that. And the world is already crazy and insidious, and we just don't need this stuff going on.
So you're looking at Gaines. Mr. Gaines is here saying, "Listen, we're here to, we don't want this to happen. It's one nation under God. Our rights come from God. You know, it's we, the people, everything." He's just saying, "Listen, this is just, doesn't need to be." So you had citizens coming to be able to say, you know, we're kind of standing, we weren't standing against this. We didn't want this to take place. And the city council obviously went ahead and voted for it to come. It wasn't unanimous, and we'll have a particular councilman talking in just a moment. But take a look right here. You're looking at what took place. This is what they approved of seven days later on July the 14th. And here he is in his little cape, and he's speaking over the city. Now, you have to understand, while the city council of Pensacola has allowing this to take place, while this is happening, at the very same moment, another captive of Satan has taken an 18-wheeler in France, and he's riding right through the crowd of people, and he's killing over 80 people and injuring many others. This is what's happening simultaneously. Why would you want to give your city over to Satan? Why would you want to allow that? You have the authority. The people put you there for you not to do that. It's not some dictatorial thing. They said, "We will vote you in, allow you to be a leader here." But all of a sudden, you took that authority and you allowed Satan to be able to come in. And you have to understand, this very same president of the council, Barr, when the Satanist stood up while the invocation was going forth by the councilman that was given the...
Councilman Wingate.
Wingate was given the invocation, that particular president, Barr, Councilman Barr, did not ask the Satanist to leave or the law enforcement to come in to remove him. But when the Christians stood up, like the Satanist stood up seven days prior, and calmly were just saying the Lord's Prayer, so as he was invoking Satan over the city, they just calmly, and everybody, by the way, just so you know this, because we were there, there was somebody standing outside the door passing out pieces of paper in this little armband thing. They didn't know about it till they came in there. These are people from all around the coast that came over here to be able to, Pensacola, to be able to stand up in behalf of being light in the midst of darkness. And somebody, the door was passing through these armbands. So even though you see a common armband thing there, that's not, they didn't come with that. That was given to them coming through the doorway. There was somebody, just that's what they wanted to do, didn't say it was bad or good, but realized that took place. But watch how the president, Councilman Barr, when the Christians stand up. Now, the Satanist stood up seven days ago. The Christians were calm, and they didn't ask the police to escort the Satanist out. But watch what happens when a Satanist is invoking Satan over the city of Pensacola. When the Christians stand up, obviously there happens to be a lot more Christians than Satanists, right? They stood up, and they're just saying, you know, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be your name, your kingdom come." That's it, the Lord's Prayer. Jesus said, "This is how you pray." That's what you pray. Well, watch what the president does. He calls over the police who were already there already. I was talking with them already. They were there, the whole meeting, they're always there. And he asked them to remove them from the audience. Watch.
Ladies and gentlemen, although I saw what happened, I was here for the special meeting where Mr. Suhor spoke during the invocation that was given. And I understand...
Not on the agenda.
Our rules allow us to have an invocation on the agenda, whether it's published on the agenda or not. If you've not read our rules, then you don't understand how city council operates. I'm going to give you a chance to speak. If you deviate from what I feel is proper invocation speech, I will have you removed from the chamber.
That won't be an issue. However, I would prefer, I would ask that these people remain quiet, or at least a level where my invocation may be heard.
Ladies and gentlemen, can I ask you to at least keep it to a low...
No.
Volume?
No, he's going to pronounce verses on us, and you...
Then I'm going to have to ask you all to leave so that he can give his invocation.
Mr. President, may I be allowed to speak?
I can clear the chambers if I like. I don't want to have to do that.
Mr. President, may I be allowed to speak?
No, sir. No, sir. This is the invocation. The board form has come in.
...being placed on the city council and the city and Iscanae County and our neighbors and our friends and family.
Mr. President, you allowed him last week to stand on the floor.
We need to have the chambers cleared this time. We need to have the chambers cleared.
I'm going to get everybody to exit the chamber.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... ...[1670.13]
What he was asking for the community to do when he was giving invocation, he was actually, wasn't doing it seven days ago. And the same president, councilman Barr, did not throw him out, did not ask him to leave, did not call the police over. And the police were put in a tough, tough spot. And, but from what we heard from the reports, according to, I believe, the clerk of the city, that it's actually councilman Barr, the president, who won, who put this all on the calendar. He's the one that brought all this to pass in the first place. And it's like, this is our city, it matters simultaneously while you were doing that, while you were thinking you need to let a Satanist come in and put, invoke Satan over the city, one of the, one of his other servants, and Paul, the apostle Paul said, "Listen, they're held captive to do Satan's will." I mean, he says it's in scripture. Was over there in, in, in France, running over people screaming out his loyalty to ISIS or whatever and just mowing them over with the, the very same time. I mean, think about the throne of heaven, what it's going to be like. When you stand there and you try to say, "Well, you know, I was trying to be politically correct, I didn't want to stir up any problems." Sadrak, Meshach and Abednego, they realize, "I just can't do this." There's sometimes, and Wingate, councilman Wingate realized, as a matter of fact, he got up and he walked out the moment the president, council Barr, allowed that to take place and just said, "I'm not going to be a part of this," and walked out. And, but they could have voted for it not to happen. Sometimes you're just going to have to take a stand. I mean, but it boils down to it, you're not going to be city councilman forever. I mean, you're going to leave there, but ultimately it's a point he wants to die then the judgment and you got to stand before God, you got to answer the question. God's going to, "Oh, great." And so I understand why you let Lucifer, his disciples come in and be able to curse the city. I mean, he's not going to, it's, you know, that's a, we have to repent for that kind of sin taking place. We got to make up our mind, you know, what kind of nation are we? Who are we? Are we a Christian nation? Do we have fundamental principles in regards to biblical principles? Do we have to do these type of things? And it was just amazing, and you had a chance to vote on it and you did, and you said yes. But afterwards, some more citizens got a chance to talk. As a matter of fact, here is John Walker and he was speaking after all that commotion. And by the way, the, the citizens said, "Well, we're not going to go to the president, to, to councilman Barr." And so then he changed his mind and said, "Okay, so if you're quiet, you can stay here." So the, the place filled back up with the people that's there. Well, listen to John Walker, what he had to say after this.
Thank you for having me here to the council, people that are here. As I began to look even through the paper at what was going on with invocation, and just as, just as a definition invocation, it's the act of invoking something or someone for assistance or as an authority. The summons of a deity are the supernatural, an incantation. And as, I'm a representative of Jesus Christ as a witness for Him. The Bible simply states in Psalm 127:1, says, "Except the Lord build a house; they that labor in vain that build it; except the Lord keep the city; the watchmen watch it in vain." And so, so as we, as in the realm of, I know that, you know, I know in the constitution and how people see different things, this is, this is summoning, you know, evoking a curse over the city. And so, so as invocation, there's certain boundaries that God gives us, gives cities across, as Homeland Security, FBI and different other, other organizations that try to keep the citizens safe. And if you ask any agent, if you ask anybody, they'll tell you, and even coming from Congress, it's no way that one agency or a conglomerate of agencies can watch every element of a city, just lack of resources. And so through prayers and through different other things, there are a lot of plots that have been dealt with and stopped because the Lord, a lot of Christians praying, a lot of people praying over the city. And that's the only reason why people are saved, because there are more people out there that's doing more criminal things than we have resources even have. So as the Lord instructed us, as He gave, Jesus gave instruction for every city, for every city, because He created the world. The word says that the Lord, the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell in it. You, myself, black, white, every culture, every, every tongue, every, I mean, everybody belong to God. So unless the, unless the Lord, the Lord keeps the city, and so if somebody's representing, not representing Jesus, but representing Satan and wants to invoke curses, that's why you have such a representation of people coming based on the word of God. And my, my last, last is just a prayer, that the Lord would keep the house and give the leaders even of this council wisdom. Lord, that you give them wisdom to set boundaries in place over the city, that their Father God, that you may visit them to set things in order, Lord God, to know what's right, what's wrong, what's going over the edge and what's decent for the city and citizens of this, of this blessed city. Father, give us wisdom in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I mean, this is wise, this is very wise and it just, you know, it is how it is. You can make up stuff, you can create stuff in your own head, but as that, this was occurring, occurring, the 18-wheeler was mowing and destroying lives, including two Americans, that we will make available for you on a future program. But a father and a son were killed in this time while they were doing that, while, while councilman Barr and the other ones that voted for this to happen, at the very same time, a Texas father and his son were killed on the streets by someone who was held captive by Satan to be able to push the ISIS principle and rode an 18-wheeler over their bodies. It was just the most horrific thing. But first, let's go to Reverend Franklin.
I appreciate the time that you give for the people to be able to speak. I appreciate your service and your dedication to the city. And I appreciate you standing in the time where we were crying together as well. I know that you can't voice from that chair where you're at, but I'm going to voice where we stand as a body of Christ in Pensacola. And I think that one of the things that I look at in what we do together is we don't form relationships out of hate and we don't form relationships that, that create discord. I don't make any excuses for anything that's going on in the city for, for what happens, but I do can, I will say this, and that is that your job is a tough job to do, to govern and to watch over and to listen to every voice out of Pensacola. That being said, I'd like to say this. Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, let us pardon. Where there is discord, let us have union. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, as we saw here tonight, we bring in light. And I really am thankful for the young man who sang the Lord's Prayer in a different language, because as he was singing the Lord's Prayer...
So you're looking at, you know, the calmly, but the news reported that down in Pensacola areas, like there was craziness going on. That's, it's not an unruly crowd, it's very orderly, saying the Lord's Prayer, doing no different than happened the week before. But listen to councilman...
Wingate.
Wingate, what he had to say when John was interviewing him.
Well, how do you feel about what's going on here tonight? I mean, I know that you gave the invocation last week, but you know, the constituents want to know, are you as a council member, are you in support of, of a person praying a satanic prayer or doing the invocation over the city?
No, I'm not in favor of it. I think it's the wrong thing to do. As we know, Satan is the enemy of the God that we serve, so I don't think we should be giving him any place here in the city council meeting to say a prayer.
How is it that, my understanding is that he's been able to give an invocation or have had four opportunities to be able to speak his piece? How was that determined and who has that authority? Because I'm hearing that it's the city clerk or is it the council board members? But who ultimately is the one that decides that that was allowed?
Well, most of the time, I think the clerk puts the person on there and we don't have any involvement in it. I think that he may have made a request several times and not been accepted, and then someone decided that he would have the opportunity to do it today.
Since it's the council members meeting an agenda, do you think that that should change and that says something that the council board members should be able to, be able to appoint?
Well, I, I don't think we need to get down into that. We have the authority to refuse to let somebody speak and I think that's what, what should have been done. He hasn't had a chance to speak at the ECUA, he hasn't been, had a chance to speak at the school board, and he hasn't had a chance to speak at the county commissioners meeting.
So is it your position that, that the city council could actually refuse him the opportunity to, to speak?
Yes, to speak in here. Now, he may speak at any other place that he likes, but I think this would be inappropriate for him to come in and speak over the meeting where we're trying to make decisions for the people of the community.
So what he did was, he got up and he walked out. Well, the clerk...
Erica Burnett.
We talked to her and she said, "It was actually councilman Barr, the president, he's the one that put this on the calendar." Didn't have to do it. You just heard Wingate say he didn't have to do it. And he wa, he walked out after that. Listen, we got to stand up. Listen, that's a small thing. That's a small thing to stand up and do what's right. It's a small thing, but it's a big thing when you don't. And speaking that over a city, think about it, as you were saying yes to Satan in the governmental seat, while the mayor, Mayor Ashton Hayward reportedly was up in his office, he didn't even come down, according to his public information officer, they were killing people with an 18-wheeler in France. We need God's protection over our country. We need God's protection over the city of Pensacola. And we just ask right now, listen, when you pray with me, join me in prayers, we pray for the city of Pensacola and the Gulf Coast. Jesus, Lord, we just call out to you right now. Father, we just call out to you in the name of Jesus and we just counsel every curse, every, every alignment with the enemy, with Satan over this city in Jesus' name. We say no to those words, no to that agreement, and we say, "Open heavens, Lord God, forgive the council people for doing this. Hold not the sin against the city. God, you said this is a glory zone, this is a place where you're going to pour out your glory and many people are going to be saved and touching, the whole world is going to be coming to the Gulf Coast region." And we say, "That is going to happen and it's going to happen according to your word and your will." And we just say, "Lord, that you would remove leaders, political leaders who are trying to sell out our constitution, sell out the citizens, the desire of the citizens, to sell out the cities and the counties and the, and the law, and you would replace them with people who will stand up for the citizens and stand up for you and stand up for what is right as one nation under God, indivisible." Lord, in our money, like she said, "It's in you that we trust and truly it is in you that we trust." We ask you right now, dear God, forgive us, forgive Pensacola for allowing that to happen. Thank you, God, for each of the Christians and the pastors who stood up for you, Father God. Lord, and we ask you, Lord, that you would end abortion, that you would send revival, that you would send a third great awakening, we pray, in Jesus' name. God bless it. Don't forget, you can find out more about us on vftv.com. Thank you for watching VFTV. If you liked this video, give us a thumbs up. Also, if you want to see more videos like this, subscribe.